Good evening, Mayor Daniel Corolla, 88 Clinton Place. I like the website. I was on it a couple of times today and yesterday, and I like the look and feel of it. It's definitely updated. I have a question, I guess, for you, Mayor, just for Mr. Coster briefly. What's the process for which this city puts out a Nixol text alert?
I would defer to you, Mr. Coster.
Normally it goes through the hour dip is one contact, and then also John Nyland. He's emergency operations.
Who makes the determination? Like, I guess my question is, what determines whether or not, because I'm signed up for them, and I get it every time they would put out a traffic cone, and that's fine. And sometimes Hackensack will close off half a central avenue and won't get it. So I'm just curious when we make a determination, who or how a determination is made to get an alert.
Usually it'd be made by myself, or if I got it from the mayor or your council. But maybe we have to be a little more conscious.
Perhaps. When programs are rescheduled, but, you know, I get those...
But the real important ones you're not getting.
The, like...
Right, exactly. Thank you.
Thanks. So, while I... Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Coster. So while I don't agree necessarily, Mayor and Council, with some of the decisions you've made, I don't think that any of you are up to do harm, although recent lawsuits seem to indicate, or at least claim otherwise. With these lawsuits, firstly in our minds sadly, and because I've made a habber reading back, which you've previously stated, Ms. Canestrino, at the meeting just two weeks ago, stated, quote, "Let's think about what we're all saying here. We're all against the same thing. None of us want anyone in a position because they're there for some political affiliation. We all agree to that. So the folks that are here, if they're here and they're working and they're proving themselves and they're doing a good job, just to remove them from that position because it's a perception that they're politically connected to someone else is just as wrong as hiring someone under that pretense." It's a serious statement, but it's a hilarious one as well when you consider the action you've all made towards ensuring political cronyism thrives under your administration, despite your campaign talking points, some of which I've previously read to you from this podium. You've all been rather forward about the patronage jobs doled out and with a complete inability even to comprehend how ridiculous and comical it looks to the general public. Now, shifting gears, at the last meeting, I asked a few questions about the economic development or redevelopment director position and any future plans for the position. Mayor, I believe you indicated at that time there were no immediate plans to fill the position. Has that changed since?
No, it has not changed.
Okay.
Still the same.
Okay, thank you. While I understand you'd be hesitant in filling a position that yielded such a questionable return on investment, especially with the pending litigation that could cost the city hundreds of thousands, I was curious to see how much fanfare accompanied the introduction of the newly created position last year. Again, two weeks ago, Mayor LeBrosse, and again, you've reiterated, there's no plan in place to fill this position, which I'm sure you'll be quick to point out isn't necessarily a vacancy per se, but more a position that's allowed under specific ordinance. Tomato or tomato, here's what Ms. Canestrino said during the August 20 meeting last year, quote, "I think it's wonderful for Hackensack. We need a director of economic redevelopment. We're at a crossroads here in town and need someone to help us and direct us and put the right resources in place to see Hackensack back again, to see Main Street flourish. That position is going to be a very, very important one and instrumental in performing those activities for our residents," end quote. So I guess my question is, if it's such an important position, why not fill it? When you created the position, despite the criticism of some that it was unnecessary, I personally felt that if you were able to get the right person in that position, the salary and benefits he or she would receive would be miniscule when compared to the increased tax revenue and the prosperity that we are all hoping for and that we all believe in. I think that even you can now say, all of you can now say, that you didn't bring in the best person for that job when you've suffered because of it on multiple levels. I mean, it's obvious that this and other hiring decisions were made not on expertise or knowledge of a candidate, but the direction or insistence of your rather large transition team. Be that all as it may, and without beating a dead horse that you can't comment on, I'm sure Mr. Scribo will be quick to point out, either you simply admit that you created a job for a political insider under the guise of economic redevelopment, another lucrative city job for Senator O'Toole's close friends, a lucrative job that Mr. Scribo and his firm continue to enjoy at the taxpayers' peril, or you fill the position and bring some actual redevelopment to our city. Thank you very much.
Earl Ward, New Terrace, Hackensack, New Jersey. I've been coming to these meetings now for some minute, and I've said that I have several chapters. Chapter one is relatively closed. There's some in here who know the outcome. More favorable for me. Ready for chapter two. Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'd like to speak to Mr. Sims directly. Mr. Sims, do you not run Hackensack Junior Basketball?
I do.
And they refer to you as the commissioner, which means you are the head of it, correct?
Correct.
It is a 501(c)(3)(2), correct?
Correct.
All right. And as a 501(c)(3), it is totally legal, totally legal, to pay yourself. And do you not gain an income from there?
No comment.
No comment, so we know the answer. So then therefore brings me two questions, two questions, two other questions just come up into my head. I went on the National Registry for 501(c)(3)'s, two sites personally, and Hackensack Junior Basketball comes up on neither one because your personal finance records as a 501(c)(3) is public records. And there's websites that it should be documented that you are Hackensack Junior Basketball, your 501(c)(3). And all your donations and coming in and all going out should be documented. Can't find it. Also, in the New Jersey Consumers Division thing on the Sip website, where you're to declare income, you left Hackensack Junior Basketball out. I think it's not right, and to piggyback off Mr. Coley, that every other councilman prior to you, in this first U2, Mr. Pataglia, they had removed their self in any of your programs once they became council or mayor or whatever it was, so that there was no signs of favoritism. I've been at the rec, or was at the rec for 16 years, and over all my years down there, I never seen any councilman coming down, except maybe to come watch a basketball game or for whatever. They weren't coming in there to get permits, to approve permits or not approve permits, or anything else, until you guys. And it also really baffles me that you're continually to do it, and you're making a profit off of city land for free. And to be a councilman, I mean, like, to... Everybody else removed their self, okay? Melfi did. Oh, man, Minestas did. They both were part of, like, sports, do sports programs, and once they became council people, they removed their self. They never came to the rec and asked for permits. They never came in and kind of had their hand down on things and tried to direct things on how things go. You know what I'm saying? And I just find that it's really strange and weird to me that you guys don't see that. You know, like, Mr. Coley just said, man, like, it is a known fact, prior to you and Mr. Pataglia being elected, those two parks were considered your parks. And the things that you were doing, and I started with you in '97, and you know I've always tipped my hat off to the efforts that you did for the kids in doing basketball, but you know I'm a basketball junkie too. I was in the park with you. I was sponsoring teams in some of these. I was reffing out there for free with you and anything else, until I joined the Hackensack Recreation Department. Then all of a sudden, me and you became on opposite ends, you know? And once I started building basketball programs, we really got further at odds with each other, to the point that I'm still unemployed. And I believe that wholeheartedly. And I've got other people who will stand right behind me and believe that same factor, you know? I think it's not right that you guys are politicians and using your political office or your political little titles to further enhance your programs, to put more money into your pockets off the city for free. If anything, okay, you're running leagues there, you're charging the kids, you're charging the adults to play. Give something back to the city. Give a donation back to the rec program. Oh, I forget, you don't like the Hackensack Rec Basketball Program. I've known that for a while. So I know you will not contribute back. And if Mr. Pataglia donated back to the soccer program, it'd just be a revolving thing because he would donate the money to his program, which would eventually come back to him anyway. So that would be fruitless to do also.
That time? I just want your five minutes. Thank you.
Evening, Mayor. Jason Undermacher, Hackensack, New Jersey. First, let me say, Mayor, I proudly accepted your bucket challenge last week, and I passed it on to my fellow Board of Enb members.
Did you do it?
Did I do it?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. You were tagged. We're not friends on Facebook, so...
Thank you.
But we definitely did it, and my Board of Enb colleagues did it, and I think we probably raised, between you and myself, probably close to $2,000.
Nice.
For the challenge. So I just wanted to mention that when I... I used to help Kathy Salvo do it, and then it occurred to me, if Ms. Salvo, Mr. Salkin, Stephen Gilbert, myself, you, all agree on something, it must be a pretty good cause.
There you go. It is a good cause. Absolutely.
Now, let me get to the substance of why I'm here. Last meeting, I spoke about Mr. Catania and his lack of responding to an RFQ. Let me go back to July 1, 2013 reorg transcript, which was online. I don't know if it's there anymore. Resolution number 287-13, be resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack. That Frank Catania Jr. be hereby appointed municipal prosecutor for the City of Hackensack and to continue a set office at the pleasure of the City Council. No RFQ was responded to by Mr. Catania. I asked why. I was told he was a city appointee. I was told it was because it was a city employee position. Well, I went back to the ordinance, and I see here, where it is 14-9, indicates he in fact is a part-time position. However, I also kept on reading, because then I looked at the Public Defender's ordinance, creating his position. I found that he is a part-time city employee as well. So I then sent an open request in for Mr. Catania's RFQ responses. Got it back pretty thin, as in he never submitted one. I got back Mr. Gray's RFQs. He submitted two. So now, both are considered to be part-time employees, same courtroom, same ordinance. One person was able to skate by without any response to an RFQ. Another person had to submit two RFQ responses. I also know in 2014, Mr. Gray made a $500 donation to Citizens for Change to make that reappointment go a little smoother. Given credence to the Deputy Mayor's position at the last meeting, that political patronage is appropriate if the appointee supports you. You all vehemently criticized this practice relentlessly about a year and a half ago, and at least two of you did so during the prior administration's entire term. As we've seen with Catania, O'Toole, Rotino, Amorato, Pilar Rosello, don't think I didn't know about that one, and now Mr. Gray, once the proverbial shoe was put on the other foot, a whole new approach has been taken. Interestingly, Webster defines hypocrisy as, quote, "Behavior of people who do things that they will tell other people not to do. Behavior that does not agree with what someone claims to believe or feel." A CFC campaign sign should be next to that definition. Mr. Gray was compelled to submit two RFQ responses. Mr. Catania, none. Both city employees. Mr. Catania got health insurance benefits, and I'm willing to publicly state that Mr. Gray was not offered such a luxury. To be honest, neither I nor anyone else here is naive as to how things work. Mr. Gray and anyone else has a First Amendment right to support any candidate they so choose. My problem is that you made several accusations against me for patronage and corruption, and here we are. My problem is your hypocrisy. As to Mr. Gray, I'm not questioning his appointment at all. He doesn't politically support me, and that is fine, but he's a Hackensack guy, a Hackensack graduate. I hear he's a good guy, and he's good at what he does. I'm happy genuinely that he has the appointment. However, here's my problem, and it's a big problem, and it will be an even bigger problem in 2017. Two employees, same courtroom, same ordinance. Why does one have to submit two RFQ responses, the other none? Why did Mr. Catania get health benefits but not Mr. Gray? Why is, quote, "The Hackensack guy being treated with much less respect than Mr. Catania"? What is the difference between the two? Perhaps the better questions are, who is Mr. Catania friends and business partners with that Mr. Gray wasn't? That's a serious question. I'd like to go down. I'd like an answer. Why was Mr. Gray forced to submit two responses, and Mr. Catania, none?
I can give you my answer, but I can't speak for the rest of the council.
I'll go one by one. Mr. Mayor, we can start with you.
My answer to that was, I honestly wasn't aware that the Public Defender was an employee position. I thought it was an outside, that he was an outside contractor. That's my... That was my belief.
Mayor, if I could just jump in on one distinction between those two positions within the ordinance, the resident accurately read the ordinance with respect to the prosecutor that he serves at the pleasure of the council. I believe that the Public Defender's term is for a one-year term. I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but I believe that that's one of the distinctions. It doesn't address the resident's sole question, but it does address a distinction within the ordinance.
I don't see that in the ordinance, Mrs. Green.
I believe it is, but I can't, I don't have it in front of me.
We can talk later, Mrs. Green. And thank you again for last week. Some people are going to be shocked that Mrs. Green and I actually had a very pleasant, polite, and professional conversation.
I've always had a very polite conversation.
Not you, Mr. Mayor.
I can't promise polite and nice, I'm sorry. It's, uh, statute trumps. Statute says the prosecutor's service will be appointed for one year. The statute trumps the city ordinance. The statute creating the positions of municipal prosecutors is for one year. So I don't care what the ordinance says. Jason is correct. What is the status with Mr. Catania? Has he been reappointed?
There hasn't been a reappointment made at this point. No, it hasn't been a reappointment.
You indicated last week, Mr. Mayor, that you were not concerned because of an expungement. I've heard, you know, I should give rumors credence, but I've heard there's been a threat of a lawsuit if he's not reappointed because this topic of expungement is gone. Is there anything to that?
I haven't heard of a threat of a lawsuit because of expungement. I would certainly take it into consideration before I move forward on an expungement, doing something because of an expungement.
Wait, you were willing to look past the expungement because you said, well, it's expunged, it was criminal conviction, which by the way is online at the court...
I understand that. I've seen it myself.
Here's something else I want to see if you're interested in regarding Mr. Catania. This is also on New Jersey Court's website. Frank Catania Jr., attorney ethics, hearing violation, money, knowing misappropriation, pending. Are you interested in that before you reappoint him? You can have this copy.
Yes, I would, actually, I would like a copy of that.
It's yours, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mrs. Canestrino, I sometimes wonder if you listen to what comes out of your mouth. On July 1, 2013, I woke up as the municipal prosecutor. When I went to bed that night, I was not the municipal prosecutor. Was it something I said? Did you get bad job performance reports on me? No. Look, you could get rid of my rear end fast enough, and we all know that, and that's okay. But don't be hypocritical. As Jason said, politics pays the roll. I didn't support you. I didn't expect anything from any of you, and I still don't. Mr. Pataglia, what are we going to do about your wife? Are you going, are you and your wife going to give the money back that she, that the city erroneously paid?
You don't talk to me. You talk to the city manager.
No, 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 I'm talking to you.
I don't have an answer for you. The city manager got an answer for you.
No, you went into executive session.
You didn't play the city.
Don't talk to you? I want to know before I go to the prosecutor's office.
Go ahead and play your one.
I'm going to the prosecutor's office.
Mr. Salkin, if it's a personnel issue, direct it towards it.
A personnel issue, rewording, a council matter that we've discussed publicly, that Tom, people said...
I understand this is why.
Excuse me, let me finish my remarks, Mayor. That he said, once the decision is made, it will no longer require confidentiality. I over, I know what they did. I know what Mr. Coster did. He reduced the raise. That doesn't matter. She's been paid $7,000 above and beyond for the last eight months. And I believe, Mr. Scribo, you disagree with me. I believe the city can recoup that if it paid an employee erroneously. Do you agree with me?
Mayor, if the council would like me to provide a response to that, I can do that in a memo form. I'm not going to answer it, not provide legal advice in an open public forum.
Legal advice? Do you consider that legal advice, Tom? Please.
But it costs us.
Okay.
That memo is subject Oprah.
I agree.
If it's memo, then it's going to be subject Oprah.
Please, please.
You discussed this in executive session. This was a council-matic matter. It came to you, and you know it. So please don't deny it. This, Mrs. Pataglia has been given a raise as of August 1, now $6,000. Another lady in that department with similar seniority is being paid $10,000 less. One person got the raise, who happens to be the spouse of the council. I have two things to do. Yes, I'm going to go to the prosecutor's, and you guys are playing with fire. I swear to you, you are. This really could constitute misconduct in office. You're supposed to be defending the city monies. You're not doing it. You've known about this since December, John. You admitted that. I've been coming here since May harping on this. You've done nothing. And I will instate to the lawsuit, and it's going to be against Maria Pataglia. And I'll get the money back on behalf of the city, Leo. I promise you that. And Hackensack's been good to the Pataglia family. Your son gets $51,000 from the school district. Your daughter-in-law gets $41,000. Your wife gets $55,000. They're doing well. America's been very good to you, hasn't it?
That's inappropriate, right?
I don't think it's inappropriate. It's all public record, John. Don't tell me it's inappropriate.
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the American comment. Come on.
Thank you for your time. I really hope you guys give this one going. You're playing with fire.
Steve Gilbert, 304 Clinton Place. First, on a good note, with all the bull that goes on around here, when I was nominated for the Ice Bucket Challenge, just to talk about the ALS Ice Bucket Challenge for a second, I really did think it would be a great thing to see the city come together for that. And I really do tip my hat off to Mayor LeBrosse, Police Director Mordega, and Fire Chief Freeman, because you guys took it and you ran with it. I really appreciate it. And for anyone in the room that hasn't seen it, Dr. Montesano, it did reach Dr. Montesano, and if you have graduated Hackensack High School and you are a comet, you have been nominated. So everyone can go home and do it. Those are the good things we like to see out of the city of Hackensack. With regards to the health insurance, I thank you for that. I asked you about it months ago, and I did cite the Best Practices Memorandum, so thank you for that. I just want to confirm, I'm going to assume based on Mrs. Greenman's vote, however, my mother always taught me not to assume because we know what happens. So I'd like to confirm, anyone that already has it is not going to be grandfathered. Starting November 1, anyone part-time or council members that have health insurance are coming off?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Salkin got the ethics violation, so that covered that one. I would hope that you guys take that very seriously, because it is an allegation. I don't think that anything's come of it yet. However, I know that if, you know, something was alleged against me in my job, I know that my employer would want to know about it because it would have a direct impact on my ability and my function in my job. I think an ethics violation at the New Jersey Bar, I think that that has a very serious potential consequence for his ability to do his job, and I would think that that's something that has to be disclosed to his employer. And if that wasn't timely disclosed, I would hope that that, if everything else isn't reason enough, I would hope that that's reason that at the next council meeting, we have a new prosecutor. As to Mr. Coley's comments regarding city employees, I hear that it's just getting worse. I think we all know who the culprits may be here. And I would just ask, I know that a memo has gone out in the past about our form of government, about us having a city manager, and about what the city manager's function is. I would ask that maybe Mr. Scribo or his firm prepare another memorandum, perhaps have a in-depth conversation in executive session as to what your duties are as council members, and you all learn from that, because we got the second round of lawsuits. We don't want it to get worse. These employees are very upset. These employees are documenting everything that you're doing. All that's going to come out of it is more shame in lawsuits. So stop it. Take your city attorney's advice, learn your roles, and let the city manager, whoever it may be, in the interim or in permanent, do his job. The new lawsuit that hit, Ms. Heck's lawsuit, just another day in the city of Hackensack, unfortunately. After reading the suit, Ms. Greenman, you welcomed depositions in the last one. The only thing that I can say is, I really wish that in some way I could be a fly on the wall in those depositions when you were deposed. Because if even one tenth of what's in that suit is true, I'm going to take your words that you wrote in email, and I'm going to send them right back at you, brazen and stupid.
Good evening. Jared Wexler, 89, Burn Street. I'd like to speak to Ms. Greenman. I'd like to begin by saying, I know that you were not born in this country, and that is not germane to what I'm going to say. I have nothing but respect for those who've come here and lived the American dream. However, when you came here, I have to assume by the fact that you are a voter and a councilperson, that you are a naturalized citizen. And in the process, you had to take a test which included American history and the Constitution, and swear an oath on the United States Constitution. Additionally, you are an attorney. At some point, you were admitted to the New Jersey Bar, or any other bar in this country, at which point you had to swear an oath on the United States Constitution. Last July, you were admitted to this council, at which point, again, you swore an oath to protect and defend the United States Constitution. The First Amendments of the Bill of Rights, which I have a copy here for you in case you've forgotten, Mr. Coster, you would make sure of his reading and catch that at some point. Thank you. The First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees us the right to stand up here and speak, and you may not like it, but as a councilperson, you have to sit up there and you have to take it. And no, you can't ask for us to be removed just because you disagree, or worse. That's part of being a councilperson. And if that's not good enough for you, maybe it's time to resign. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Good evening. Stefan Neustatter, 279, Hamilton Place.
How are you, sir?
I really have been sitting here, and I think this council should take much stronger umbrage at the aspersions to people and the American way, and American being good, and someone being a citizen. This does not belong in a council meeting. It doesn't belong in an outhouse. It doesn't belong within the public sector. And I really would wish, irrespective of what would happen, or what was said, or what the issues are, that the council make a statement that personal derogatory personal claims relating to citizenship, the American way, or who did what or made what, and the American way's been good for you, doesn't belong in this chamber.
Deborah Keeling-Gennis, Hamilton Place. I'm coming up here as a very concerned and scared homeowner. And I'm referring to the tax appeals. The city is faced with a huge tax appeal bill left over from the last, the previous last administration, as mentioned by the council. And we've been told that the city is cash-strapped. Now, it was said that the first-year bond of $8.6 million will cost the taxpayers approximately $65 to $70 for that first year. Am I correct? Yes, sorry. Okay. The second bond of about $10 million that will be levied will be a substantial hit to the residents. And there's also a third-year bond of about $10 million. Am I correct? All right. So this is going, this, this, oh my God, this worries me to no end. Okay. Now, no one here is anti-police. Lord knows, I have had experience with them in the Lord knows, I have had experience with them in the past year and they've been nothing but professional. Very, very good. But with the looming $30 million, $30 million tax levy, tax appeal bill, which is forthcoming, how can we pay them 22%?
Wrong.
Well, this is, I don't know. I don't know. Or maybe someone's not being truthful. I don't know. I don't know. Listen, the city is in financial dire straits. I don't, listen, if you can find a way to give them this raise without it affecting our taxes, give it to them.
It's a done deal.
Give it to them.
Fire every cop that's been hired in the lawsuit.
Okay? Give it to them. But I know it's probably a done deal, but I'm just expressing my concern that I think that this was a pretty reckless decision in regard to the $30 million that we're gonna have to pay for. Okay? Mr. Bataglia and Mr. Sims, we've knocked on a lot of senior citizens' doors, okay? A lot of people who are struggling to stay in their homes. We've knocked on their doors. And I don't know how you're gonna explain this when they get hit with these huge tax increases. How are we gonna explain that? How are you gonna explain that? I mean, you know, Mr. Sims, we're in the teachers' union. We got, we didn't even get 2%. Are we not more important? I mean, you don't carry guns. Like I said, nobody's anti-police. We have the firemen coming up. You're gonna give them a big one? We got other contracts coming up. They're gonna expect the same. They're gonna expect the same. I just need, okay. I supported you guys because of your strong stance on transparency and fiscal responsibility. I convinced folks to vote for you. Now I don't know what happened. Contracts are being pushed through in the dark of the night and you're being dishonest about how much things are really gonna cost us. This is very personal for me because, you know, we have worked together intimately. And to see this council make some of the decisions that you've made is very distressing. It's just distressing. The silence up here between Mr. Bataglia and Mr. Sims is deafening. It's deafening. And I just wish you the best.
Before we move forward, I'm gonna interject here. I just wanna make something clear, especially since the teachers were brought up. If you take the total amount, yeah, you could say it was 22%. Now, I defer to Mr. Salkin to help me out. Teachers go through a step, don't they?
Sure. And they got 71% over the three years.
Okay.
You got, so you didn't get 2%.
But that doesn't include their step. Mr. Salkin, does that include their step?
Doesn't.
No. So if you took their step into consideration, teachers also probably get 15, 20% if you figured it that way.
Well, they're going up the ladder.
It's called a step. That's a contractual agreement. So you as a teacher...
No contract was negotiated whatsoever. We had the evergreen and they stayed at their current salaries. On step, what would the salary and wage increase have been for the next three years of this contract? Far more than it ended up being. Far more.
Yes, no, we made out better on the contract. There's no doubt. That's not the point I'm trying to make. I'm just making the point, the steps, you cannot include the steps in the raise. You have one and a half, one and a half, one and a half. They end up a contract for a year and a half, all right? They're entitled to their steps, all right? It's misconstruing and misleading to present it that way and I don't want the public to think that way because that's not what happened. Because every teacher and every police officer and every fireman in this town go through a step process, all right? Otherwise, they'd all be making $40,000 a year with a small increase every year, right through their whole career. All right? They start low and they work their way up. The public needs to know that. Anything else? I don't know what to tell you. Being misrepresented.
We have the CFO to explain it to you, not a CFO.
The CFO has already explained it. And there is a step process involved here. If you count the steps, it's very easy. And a teacher would get 20%. I didn't see you as a teacher, Ms. Keeling. Complain about the teachers getting 20%.
You did.
Oh, yeah, if you count your steps, you did.
Yes, you did.
If you count your steps, you did. Well, check it out before you come up here and misconstrue and serve poison in front of our public. Thank you. And we'll see if the...
Don't tell me about it.
Enough, please.
Hey, you need to be quiet.
I'll be quiet, but I have their contract in my hand, bro.
I don't care.
You don't? We got...
I don't care.
We got that.
You should be quiet.
Start the conversation.
Be quiet. Go back to Trenton.
Let her speak.
You're ignorant. You're right. You're ignorant. Yes, you're ignorant. And...
That's it? Stop.
Really? I'm ignorant. Really? You're out. You're out.
We didn't get up there and make gross misrepresentation of fact.
How about your cronies out here? Are they gonna go?
Did you just call somebody ignorant from the stand?
Yes, they are ignorant.
Well, there you go. That's my reason.
And the fact that you let them talk to me that way?
I didn't let them do anything. I am gabbling them down, but nobody was stopping. Nobody is stopping. I am gabbling everybody down. Now, is everybody gonna calm down and you can talk? Are you going to calm down?
Yes.
Thank you. I don't want anybody speaking from out there. Please. She gets her five minutes just like everybody else. Mr. Gilbert is gone. He's outside. The other Mr. Gilbert.
Tony Haverty, 283 Berry Street in Hackensack. I just wanted to speak about the 22% because, in fact, it is a 22% raise. Hackensack is under dire circumstances. And I just wanna make sure that the taxpayers understand how our taxes are going to be inflated. The governor gave the council a tool to use to keep taxes down for local municipalities. The 2% cap is an overall cap. Now, Hackensack, you're talking about getting $8 million, $10 million, then another $10 million. Everybody has to hold back. Everybody has to sacrifice for the good of the city. That includes employees, police, fire, and regular employees. This is my feeling.
And teachers. You're part of the tax...
I'm saying everybody.
I just wanna make sure you get everybody in the same...
Everybody, but the teacher budget is not issued for an officer, not here. That's something that the Board of En...
You don't pay a school tax?
Of course I do. And I tell you what, I didn't vote for an increase. I didn't vote for an increase, okay? Just to let you, no, I can make that public. I'm just saying that I think, I think going above the 2% cap is reckless. That's my opinion and I'm entitled to it.
You were very much entitled to it.
Okay?
Absolutely.
Amy Kanasrieno, Hackensack. As you know, I was a police officer for over 35 years. These two ladies, good friends of mine, who were anyway, are very misinformed about this police contract. They take six steps to raise to get to your top salary. You come on the job, I think you start around in the low 30s. And you're in a graduation process in six years, you raise to the top to get to the top salary. And that wasn't done by this council, by this contractor. This has been in existence for years. And I have to even mention that the present, the new contract, this council got the PBA to extend the steps to nine steps, which now means it takes nine years to get what they were getting in six years. Now, the 1.5% pay raise, the guys in those steps from one to six do not get that 1.5%. They only get what they get by prior contractual agreements. Now, whatever that may be, they gradually go from 33 to whatever the top salary is in six years. But that was not done here and that was not controlled by these people. The 1.5% that the, only guys that got that are the people that are beyond six years. And of that 1.5%, they now have to pay back by the governor's decree, they have to pay back a percentage of their health insurance. So they probably come back with maybe a little over 1%. So when you keep saying 22%, you're wrong. You're wrong. These agreements were made many years ago and stand today. They should get credit for getting the PBA to go to nine years and hopefully in the next contract even further. So when you make these bold statements and you frighten people, you're wrong. I'm sorry, you're wrong. Your dear friends of mine, but you're wrong. And you know, you went down to Trenton and you made an issue of this and you were wrong. You tried to...
No, that should be...
Well, no, it was a public meeting. It was a public meeting.
Yes, it was a public meeting. And they...
No back and forth.
No, they, well, that's to be seen. That's to be seen.
Mr. Pasqua, Mr. Kanasrieno, people in the audience, no back and forth.
Let's not get irritable.
No arguing.
The agreement, when the state makes its final agreement, then we'll know. Okay? That's what he said. But please, you're wrong on the issue. They didn't get 20. Okay.
Can you keep five minutes?
Now, everyone go home and put ice on your head.
But since I've been writing down what I have to say, I've been, a little bit more. Regina De Pasqua, Parker Avenue. It's been an interesting couple of weeks here, lawsuits, police reports, backstabbing, gossip, and I see a particular council member right smack in the middle of all this negative attention. And that's unacceptable. I hope I can say what I want to say without a council member filing another police report against me for coming to council meetings, for going to concerts on the Green. Yes, this is what I've done. She thinks so much of herself, I'm following her. Remember, you're a public figure and I also suggest you look up New Jersey statute 2C, you might wanna write this down, Ms. Attorney, 2C:28-4A. Falsely incriminating another is a fourth-degree crime. Making a false report is a crime, Ms. Greenman. Okay? I shouldn't have to tell that to an attorney, to a council member, to a public figure. I can say what I want to say and I can go to the concerts on the Green and I can take pictures. Enough said on that. You voted for the introduction of the bond ordinance for the tax appeals, Ms. Greenman, and you voted for the application to the local finance board for approval for the bond. But your actions are in direct contrast to those votes and it's mind-boggling, not acceptable. You're flip-flopping. I cannot understand what you were hoping to accomplish by going to the local finance board to speak out against the police contract. You tried to make the city look bad. You took an oath to protect the interests of the city and you have a fiduciary duty to this city. I think you violated those duties. I question your allegiance to Hackensack. The local finance board was not the venue to area gripes. You voted no on the police contract, first citing some vague irregularities you could not explain, and then at the next meeting stating that you hadn't seen the contract. Irregularities, but you didn't see it. That's just bizarre. Then you went all the way to Trenton to throw mud at the city when you have trouble making it to meetings right here in Hackensack. I hope you didn't miss any business or personal appointments to go to Trenton just to try to make us look bad. Further, a couple of residents and a so-called self-proclaimed journalist made the trip to Trenton. That's how I know who was in Trenton. They also slung their share of mud at the city. I wonder how they knew about this meeting? While it's a public meeting, I could not find any public notice of the agenda. I guess a little bird told them, just like they know about the additional bonds that I never, have no recollection of hearing at a public meeting. These residents are vocal supporters of Mr. Rotino. One of them called him the best thing since white bread, whatever that means. Why would Rotino supporters, including you, Ms. Greenman apparently, bring up the police contract at the local finance board? The only conclusion I can come up with is that it was an attempt to bolster his suit against the city. It smells of a conspiracy. Whatever the reason, doing that was not in the best interest of the city. You and the two residents who also spoke out should be ashamed of yourself for doing this. That was reckless. The CFO, deputy mayor, bond attorney, auditor, tax assessor, interim city manager, they worked hard to put the city in the best financial light and you, along with your party, thought it was a good idea to throw mud at the city at this time. Really? These professionals put in a lot of time and effort on behalf of the residents, not for self-serving interests for those of one individual or only one group, just like self-serving. You just voted no on health benefits. That was self-serving, absolutely. This is for all the residents. The local finance board is not going to void the police contract. Get over it and move forward. Deal with the reality of what is. That meeting was only to get approval for the bond ordinance. Without DCA approval, the residents of Hackensack would be looking at a tough nut to crack in tax payments. Why say or do anything that might jeopardize that approval? Shame on you, Ms. Greenman. Shame on you. For all of what you did to me, what you're trying to do to the residents of Hackensack, shame on you. I believe that the majority of this council and our professionals are looking out for the best interests of the city. Ms. Greenman, in your actions, I do not believe that you are. Moving forward, I will try to ignore you and your destructive behavior. Please stop the petty foolishness that brings negative attention to the city. We should focus on and support all the good things we have going on in the city, like the summer concerts, and I'll see you tomorrow there.
Regina, Clinton Place. I feel much more important than Regina tonight. Ms. Greenman saw a fit to go to the Burton County Police and leave all kind of paper on me. I don't think the Hackensack police were good enough for you, right, Rose? You felt? You needed to go to the Burton County Police? I think you have a whackadoo sitting on the council with you. How she got on... Mayor, it's my opinion, it's, Mayor, my opinion is this lady is dangerous for this city. She is absolutely dangerous. I think the 22% police raise, the bogus statements that were made, that people actually went to Trenton to try to hurt the city and stop your financing, it's the most outrageous thing I think I've ever seen. I disagreed with the previous council for eight years. I never did anything subversive. Traveled to Trenton, made stories of a 22% police raise. It's outrageous, the lies. What you don't mention is cops have come over here on a rice list that have been either laid off or chose to come here from other departments. Family men with kids, $33,000 wage earners. What do sanitation men make, Mr. Coster?
Well, their starting salary is about 28. You go up to 40.
Okay. You have police officers with families right now in this city, days before this raise, making $33,000. Yes, steps could possibly give them a 22% raise. Give a family man, a police officer, an academy graduate with experience from another town making $33,000. They came here with the promise of coming in at step one and two of escalating every single year. Now, two additional steps have been put in. This contract was absolutely a win for the city, was it not, Mr. Coster?
This was.
And it took Mr. Coster 24 hours as interim manager to sign it because it sat on the desk of the city manager for months, just being stymied for no other reason but political gains. And Ms. Greenman, you're smirking, but you were the one that helped hold it there. It's a disgrace what you're doing. Mayor, on a more pleasant subject, I don't know, more pleasant, but the recent street construction that's going on, specifically on Central Avenue to State to Salem, the patching that they're doing as they complete it is terrible. I agree. I think we have to seek some sort of remedy.
Ms. Alwes claimed that...
Okay.
They're going to pay it when they're done.
All right. Because it is awful. I also, Mayor, I wanna compliment you. I'm going completely out of order, but I got so riled by this outrageous bogus comments that were made and the deviousness of going to Trenton to try to throw the city off. Great job on the ALS challenge.
Thanks.
Police chief jumped right in, police director, fire chief jumped right in. It was great, great city spirit. I also thank you... Um, I also thank you and the deputy mayor visiting the homeless shelter. I think it's wonderful, we have a better relationship with them, I think the, the whole situation has turned around in the past year. One year ago today, we had absolutely craziness with the shelter. It's a whole different atmosphere now. I, I think everyone would agree with that.
I think it's worked.
I think the work that the police department, Mr. Coster has done, and the mayor and council with the homeless shelter has really changed things for the residents, for the homeless, it's a much better environment. Um, I'm thankful that you're taking the health insurance from part-timers and council people away. That's been kind of a, an issue I've talked about before. And I'm wondering if the accounting is complete on the monies that Mr. Rotino owes the city? That he's been overpaid and?
You'd have to check with Mr. Coster.
Have you worked on that, Mr. Coster?
I haven't, I truly been with the attorneys.
Okay. With, with, I guess, um, this firm, Mr. Screvo's firm?
A special attorney that was appointed, in this case.
Okay. Um, lastly, uh, I was at a few council meetings, different, different councils, and their city attorneys had laptops, I don't know, provided by the city or on their own, with all the city ordinances and codes. I think it would be very helpful, because all I hear Mr. Morris and Screvo say is, they don't have the city ordinances in front of them to review. I think it might be something to think about, either to laminate little cheat sheets for Mr. Screvo so he can get up to speed on Hackensack. I know we're not your biggest client, but you really should know.
We maybe, yeah.
Well, we probably are gonna be, but that's a whole nother story. Because I think Cy Chase is gonna see to that with, with the attorneys, and I don't know how rotten that is of him. The man does have an office there, and he relies on the parking. Some of us just don't agree with that plan, but, yeah, that's it. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening again, Kathy Salvo, one eighty-four Hackensett Street. Um, the S, the Bucket Challenge, um, Michael Medego, my favorite police director nominated me, and I nominated, uh, David and Leo to, um, also participate, my good friends and Regina. Um, I had occasion to visit the health department today, and they're, they're short-staffed. A couple of people retired, um, Mr. Peters left us, he went to, uh, we, he didn't get a commitment from us, so he went to, I think the county, I believe. And they're short-staffed. And I had mentioned this before, that I don't see a big city like Hackensack, um, share, sharing services. This is nothing that we can do. We have the medical center here, which generates a lot, a lot of paperwork for the health department. The birth and the death alone, uh, would be a job, a full-time job for anybody, and plus everything else. When Chris Coley retired, we're, we're minus, um, an inspector to do, uh, buildings for, for kitchens, because he had to do, he has to do kitchens. We have two CFO, we have two COs. We get a building CO, and we also get a health CO through a food establishment. And Chris knew everything about that, he was the construction code official as to that, and he's retired. So we are short-staffed. Now, somebody said that somebody's coming in September first, Mr. Um, Coster, from, from someplace, is that gonna be temporary, is that gonna be shared service? What, what are we doing?
Shared service, interlocal agreement.
We're a big city, we can't afford the shared service, we're gonna run into lawsuits, we need professional, full-time people in this department. As I've explained in the past with the building department, who is, who needs, who needs help also. Um, is it, is it on contract, is it, is it per day, and what, how does the shared service run?
It's an interlocal agreement, uh, of one-year term.
It is a year term. Why can't we, we just appoint a real, a real full-time person?
At the time, this is interim, uh, until we decide which way we're going.
But, but we're, we're, we're holding ourselves a year, can't this be done like maybe, maybe a two-month thing until we get a full-time person heading the department?
I think for the long run, it'll pay off, and we do have some changes to be made in the health department, and we are looking into them, so I, I think it will work out.
I know it's not, because I know that, I know what, what they do, and I know the workload that's upon these people, and they're very stressed, and it's, it's overload, and we're gonna run into lawsuits. We don't have anybody heading that department that has the credentials to do so. And that needs to be, to be done soon. Otherwise, we're gonna, we're gonna look into more lawsuits, and we don't need more lawsuits. Okay, thank you.
You won't.
Seeing none, motion to close to the public?
Sorry, filed into my notes.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Tagliano?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Tagliano?
Well, just to clarify some points. I started soccer program in nineteen eighty-six for the simple reason that my sons were not allowed to play in another city's festival. Related that, you think that I own the field, everybody got a key. Anytime, let me finish. Anytime that you get a permit from the recreation lady, you got the key for open the bathrooms and open the fields. Now, it's true that I go around the field, and sometime I suggest, okay, we need to repair the goal, to repair the nets, or anything like that, yes, I do that, right? But I act the recreation department, and they, sometime they call the people in DPW or whoever work in the department, but it's only for the benefit for the kid. I don't play. I just go over there and coach and supervise the kid. And you got any time, go over there and help, okay? Money-wise, everybody know that, I used to have a friend, that he owned business, and he used to give everything for free to the kid. Uniforms, soccer ball, including coaches. And now he got the indoor facility in Casa, we use that facility too. So, through the program, the kid, they get scholarships at the schools, they went to college, many of them. So, if anybody got any problem with the program that I got over there, go and do something else. Thank you.
Okay. Um, first, I'd like to make a, a brief announcement. We have a few, uh, board openings. These things are gonna be talked about this in the, um, committee of the whole meeting, and we're gonna have it advertised on the website as well. But right now, we're looking for a resident, someone that has to, that resides or lives in the housing authority. We need, uh, someone on the housing authority board, but it has to be a resident of the housing authority. If anyone here is, or lives there, or knows anyone who does, who's interested, please apply. Uh, we have an opening on the recreation board. Anyone's interested, again, please apply, and we're looking for an alternate on the planning board. So, the, they, that information will be available on the website, you just have to submit a letter of your interest, and, you know, will certainly be considered. We need some good qualified candidates for the board. Folks, you're coming out here, a lot of you to a lot of meetings, this is a great positive way to be involved in the city, and we'd appreciate seeing some folks involved there. I think at the beginning of the meeting, talking about the park, I think we had a lot of folks here who were also talking about the redevelopment that's going on. Um, we had someone here from the state who talked about his involvement in some of the studies and some of the work that had been done in contributing towards the redevelopment plan. This is, we had folks here tonight who were concerned about the financial status or the perceived financial problems that we have in the city today. What is the best way for us to overcome some of those problems? Right? The best way is to bring, increase our ratables, to bring more tax dollars into the city. And the way to do that is through redevelopment. You know I talk about this every week, so I'm not gonna spit out the same words over and over. We had enough folks that talked about it in a positive way to make, and I was very, very happy to hear that. Right? It's critical for this city to embrace what it has, to market what it has in a positive way, and to encourage, to every extent possible, redevelopment people to come to our community and see the value in, in what we have here to offer. Yes, I hear critics, I'm not being fiscally responsible, that is the epitome of fiscal, of fiscal responsibility. To maintain, our, our CFO has alluded to this when he talked about our budget, this is, we have to think out of the box, we have to get out of our comfort zone. We know what we have, we have a gem of a city. We have to encourage that city to grow. That is how we will overcome some of the financial issues that we have today, and I ask you, please, to continue to support that. Parking, there were concerns about parking. Uh, the city is in contract currently with Len Beer, who was like the parking guru of the state. I mean, he solved problems in Brunswick, uh, Brunswick and Morristown, and he's actually gonna be briefing the council, uh, at the next, at the next meeting, I think, in the September meeting. Uh, he is doing a full evaluation of the city, where the growth is, where we, the planned growth is for the city, and what the parking, the reasonable parking expectation needs to be. Um, this is, this is definitely a key contributing factor to our success. I agree with all of you. You can't come to downtown if you're not gonna park. Right? We can't build if there's not enough places to park. So we, we brought in the best of the best, and believe me, we're gonna take very serious considerations, we'll keep you abreast of the situation as we go. As far as the park goes, I know that Mr., um, Mr. Reiner may change after change after change to the plan, to put as much parking back on the street as possible, and to open up and make available that Atlantic Street Garage, which, believe me, from, Mr. Chase was here, and I respect his ability to be here, and I respect the years of service that he's put into this community. But it's, it's basically walking across the street. I want you to understand where it is. There's parking here, you cross one street, and that's where the parking garage is. That's all we're asking him to do. Provide, and, and it's a covered garage, so in climate weather, it's a better asset than being parked, having parking on the street. So, yes, it's a change, and change is difficult for all of us, but we have to open our eyes and be willing to change if we're gonna survive and grow as a city. So very, very important. Mr. Crowley, I guess, and Mr. Nudermacher, I guess I should be a little flattered that you take the time to watch the tapes and write down my quotes word for word and read them. So I guess I'll, I'll take that as a positive thing. Yes, I am definitely opposed to political cronyism. I was when I ran for office, and I am as I sit here today. I gave you a couple of examples, as you quoted me well, as to what I thought were political cronyism to both extremes. But you brought up some other things tonight, which I think I have to expand on my feelings on political cronyism. You were saying, well, because someone gave you a five-hundred-dollar donation, they shouldn't be allowed to work for the city? Is that what you're telling me? So if someone contributes to our campaign, let me speak, you were referring, someone contributes to our campaign, and they're the most qualified person for the job?
Like Eric Bernstein, right?
They, they should. I played, I was respectful of you, I asked the same. We, you cannot use that as a weapon to say, this person contributed to your campaign, so he should not be allowed to work for the city. You know, you, you know those statements are not true, and they're not symbolic of political. Political cronyism is when you hire someone, you put someone a job who is not qualified or capable to do that job. And they, excuse me, Steve, please. A little, all I'm asking, I respect you, I'm asking a little respect. I'm, I'm glad that you brought that up. Your other questions were about economic, Director of Economic Development.
He's gone.
Uh, yes, we, we kept that position, we kept that position open, because we did feel it was an important position. Right now, our, our key focus is to solicit and find the best city manager of this city. When that person comes on board, based on his or, his or her credentials, we'll let that person determine if we also need to fill that role of Director of Economic Development. Because that's where that decision should be made. So, yes, we do agree it's an important position, and we'll discuss that with the new city manager as to when we're filling. We didn't, we didn't terminate, we didn't eliminate that position. I cannot talk about Mr. Rotino's capability here, because as you know, we have a pending litigation, so I'm not allowed to discuss that. But you've, you've heard me speak of him in the past, and as far as his capabilities as Director of Economic Development, I think you, you know the answer to that question without me elaborating on it. The contract, we're also not allowed to speak about that because it's the subject of litigation, but I thank those of you who tried to explain it. You have to understand, these things are not black and white, these things are not one way or the other, these are complex contracts, labor contracts, especially those that involve steps such as teachers, firemen, police, there's two components to them. That should say, speak for itself. And finally, I really, I don't want folks to be frightened by some of the things that were said. I participated in the hearing with the local finance board, that where we, uh, both the CFO and myself spoke in regard to the city, where we are applying for a tax refunding bond, which is the most beneficial way for us to start paying what is due, paying what we inherited, thirty million dollars' worth of tax appeals, and paying them off in a three-point plan that our CFO has laid out wonderfully to accommodate and have the least amount of impact for the city. I have to say that Mr. Our CFO, Mr. Mangan, uh, he, he presented a plan to the local finance board that laid this out very clearly. I spoke on behalf of the city, and I spoke about many of the accomplishments that we've made this year, and many of the things that we've done, and the progress that's happened, and some of the fiscal challenges that we had and how we overcome, how we have overcome them. We had to make a lot of decisions this year, folks. Were they easy? Absolutely not. Were all of them popular? You know that that's not true. But we made them, and we, we stand by the decisions that we made. We will always make decisions that are in the best interest of our residents. That's why we're here, that's why you voted for us, and that's what we're here to do. I believe that this meeting with the local finance board went very, very well. After Jim and my presentation, the comments we received, the discussion that was had amongst the board members was very, very positive. They delayed making their decision until they're sure they have, they don't have any additional questions. I anticipate they'll make their decision soon, and I'm hoping for a very, very positive outcome. So please, don't be discouraged by folks that want to come here and present this in a poor light. See, that is not true. We have a lot to be thankful for in this city, we have a lot to be hopeful for in this city. And if we work together and accomplish these things, anything is possible. I thank you for coming, and I look for your continued support.
Thank you. Mr. Sims?
Good evening, I wanna thank everyone for coming out tonight. Last Friday was our last day of summer camp, now we have open registration for all activities. The trees will be, uh, under green tomorrow, hope you see, hope to see you all. May.
Ms. Greenman?
Okay. Uh, I think the most telling thing here is that the CFO was not allowed to speak at any of the public hearing that are addressed directly to the residents. He was in Trenton, he explained the situation, he provided all of the documentation. It's clearly that the police is getting over twenty-two percent raises. The two residents who had gone to Trenton, had gone, they are on their own volition. All the information about the hearing are available, and available on the state website. I, I would ask you to stop, Regina, she's waiting and making mockery out of the process.
You're making a mockery out of this city. You are making a mockery out of this city. What councilwoman files a police report against the residents? What councilwoman files a police report against the residents? Because I yelled? I'm yelling. Tony yelled? Tony yelled? Do you want to file a police report against Tony? She yelled?
Come on, you can do it.
I gotcha.
Continue, please.
Uh, the two residents who had gone to Trenton, had gone, they are on their own volition, and I commend them for their love of this city, for their respect for their fellow human beings, and for their ability to express themselves so well. They were applauded, and they were given time and opportunity to present all of it. Now, I'm going to make a statement about the attorney's allegiance to his client, and here it is, um, and I'm not gonna quote the case law, but I'm going to say that the attorney's allegiance to his client is no stronger than his commitment to preserving the integrity of the administration of justice. And here, justice was subverted. Indeed, an attorney's loyalty to client can never, never override the professional loyalty owed to the justice system. It is known and accepted by every attorney that he owes continuing and constant fidelity to the administration of justice. Lawyers have a professional commitment to the judicial process and the administration of justice. In every sense, an attorney, in every instance, an attorney is an officer of the court and required to serve the administration of justice honorably, responsibly, and this was done for the public welfare. That was most profoundly implicated in this case. Furthermore, I'm glad to hear that there is a good relationship with homeless, because it certainly stuck out as a sore thumb when it was, the homeless were addressed as deterrent to our city's business, and certainly a deterrent to future development. I was very sad when somebody made such a pronouncement. It's a terrible situation. Nevertheless, I appreciate. Nevertheless, I appreciate your coming here, appreciate you taking your time, and I appreciate all of the concerns that you bring to the city. Thank you so much.
Please, thank you. The park, this wasn't an overnight, this thing wasn't thrown on our lap yesterday. We've been going over this for such a long, long time, from the last council right into this council. It's part of a plan, and if you don't stick to the plan, the plan falls apart. Just think, if we were to buckle every time we tried to build something on Main Street because the one store next door doesn't want it to go up because it's going to block, you know, block his son coming in his window, or whatever reason, you can't do it. You can't do it. All due respect to Mr. Chase, I understand some of his concerns. If I had my business there, I might be moaning about it too, though I certainly don't think I would threaten litigation. This park is necessary, these green areas, these green spaces are necessary, it's proven in all the studies. We didn't win that award number one in the state of New Jersey for nothing. A lot of time and work went into this, and we plan on sticking to the plan. So if you folks, you know, every time we want to put up a new building and somebody threatens to sue us, you're going to come down here and say, oh, you can't do it, you can't do it. This city's going nowheres, all right? This is the only way you're going to move the city forward. This property, this park is going to enhance their business, is going to raise their property values. They're losing at this time one spot, which will soon be not even an issue because Hackensack University Medical Center will no longer be parking in that garage, so there'll be plenty of parking spaces for everybody. You're talking about walking from about 50 yards from Atlantic Street, across Atlantic Street into a covered parking garage, okay? I would hate to think that any of Mr. Chase's clients would leave him, all right, based on having to walk across the street to go get legal advice. I just don't think that's going to happen. I understand his concerns, but I don't think they're legitimate, and my concerns are more for the overall good of the city, and that's why I voted yes on that, and I was proud to vote yes on it because we've been trying to get this pushed through for a long time. The Finance Board, one word came to mind tonight, and that was reckless. I heard the word reckless used, and I think it was reckless only because if somebody goes down there and doesn't present the facts the way they really are, and that board made a decision to decline that bond, the impact on the citizens of Hackensack would have been catastrophic. And I knew the Finance Board, I believe in my heart that the Finance Board would not do that to us, but had they done it because of several people doing that, that would have been just catastrophic, and...
She's laughing. Look at her. What a moron.
I still think it's, I still think...
I'm looking at your girlfriend, Regina.
Please. I just still think it's sad that, you know...
You don't even know the raise you got.
People from this city went down there, and to me, I feel there's a separate agenda there, and that's my personal opinion on that. Tomorrow, tomorrow night's the Dupree's. Tell people to go down, it's the last concert of the year. We're trying to get this win. Is the weather supposed to cooperate tomorrow? Yesterday?
John, can I have a word by the outside my window tomorrow, please? Just a minute.
I, Rick, I actually, I actually took a picture of that thing, but I never used it because I thought it was comical, but...
I had it all the time, but you know, next thing, I left it next Monday. I said, come on, I'm not that bad at meetings.
That's funny. We did notice that, believe me. And I will have to move that down a little bit. I think that's fair.
Well, it's like when your colleagues said, I won't hold my breath on it.
All right. That's about it. I lost the words, but everybody have a safe trip home. Thanks for coming tonight. Thank you. Motion to close.
Ballot's a favor?
Yes.
Ballot's a favor?
Ballot's a aye.
Okay.